Rise in individual time. Alright Robert.
Okay, we'll have local officers now, you know, council, Mayor Bauer.
Here.
Mayor Porton, Madam Gray.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Alderman Green called in about an hour ago with a family emergency.
Alderman Purvis.
Uh, he indicated he's out of town.
Alderman Welch.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
The Alcorn.
Pass can leaders in the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, I think we had a few public comments today. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bales, you state your name and address, please?
Yes, thank you. My name is Janet Bales, 16612 Turn Road. Thank you Mayor Bauer and Alderman persons. At the previous city council meeting, a motion was made and passed to pause volunteerism in the city offices until guide rails were agreed upon, established and agreed upon. This would be to protect both the volunteers and the city. So, I'd like to address the rich history of volunteerism in Jamaica Beach and give a shout out to those volunteers, past, present, and future, who deserve an at-a-boy or an at-a-girl. Stephen Lisa Carson loaned to me, I have to print it, a great little book called Jamaica Beach, USA, A Proud Heritage, written by Sarah Graff. It was published in nineteen ninety-four and sadly it's out of print, but you can get it on eBay for a whopping amount of money. The book gave recollections of early residents such as Laleah Wolverton, Thelma Woolsley, Barbara Green, who was the mother of Alderman Green, gave Unley, Peggy McFerritt, Tom Cowan, and others. These recollections were full of accounts of volunteers who helped to build Jamaica Beach. So, the book is just a lovely book, so if anybody gets a chance to read it, the names, I looked at the names here, all those names are in this book. Uh, the first city secretary was Jody Walstad, she was unpaid, she was a volunteer. Community volunteers prepared, printed, and mailed property tax cards to assist the city in collecting taxes. Volunteers donated land, dollar, materials, and labor to build this city called. And then there was the volunteer fire department, net, emergency medical service, Forrest and Sherwood Green were charter members of that group. James Foster served without pay as our first municipal court judge. And initially, most of the dispatching for the Jamaica Beach Police Department was done by volunteers, Jeanne Gardner and Peggy Stokes, some of y'all may remember those names. Uh, of course, our park would not be here today if it weren't for volunteers such as Edith Schmidt, Leanne Green, Jay Matten, Ralph McDermott, Barbara Cook, and many others. So, the very last line in this book is, and I quote, "Undoubtedly, the energetic civic-minded proud volunteers of Jamaica Beach will continue to improve their beloved city."
Thank you Janet. I'll have to borrow the book from Lisa if not have the privilege of reading it yet. Alright, Mr. Sart.
Hi, I'm Bob Sart, I go by Pops. I think y'all know Jessica, she's my daughter-in-law.
For the record, Bob lives at sixteen five twenty-one East Bayside Way.
East Bayside Way, and I also had a house on one six nine two four Beachcomber.
Yes.
And my wife has a house on one six nine ten in Beachcomber.
But we appreciate your property taxes.
Yes. We can't figure out what to do. My problem I have is our dunes over there at Beachcomber. Many years ago, after Ike, uh, well, I was the fifth house back, and now I'm the third house back after Ike. And nothing's been done with the culverts since Ike. And Sean came up and got his front end loader and dug out these huge trenches through the dune to drain the roads instead of running it through the culverts. And you're not supposed to walk on the dunes, more than let's drive a tractor through the dunes, you know? And so, now we have, it seems like we ought to be able to figure out how to do this, to have a dune and a culvert. Have, have both, you know, it's, shouldn't be too tough. But, uh, right now we have it open and there's posts with chains. Golf carts are driving around, one on the east side over there on my wife's side, on Maryland's side. And so, I said something to Russell about it, and I said, "Well, just put a post there." He said, "Well, we can't put posts there, plus, I don't know where the line is." There's a, a-
Old property line or vegetation line from the dune?
It's a, oh, the-
Extinity, the white-
Extinity line, extinity line there.
Oh, okay.
And so, he got a bunch of logs and put the logs there by where the posts are. And here's another picture of them, there's a bunch of them, and there's some logs on my side too, on the west side over there. And we have a storm brewing possibly out there. And these logs will turn into projectiles, and it's pretty much the norm to get rid of the logs on the beach before the hurricane season, because they will rain your house. Especially, these are in line to get Marilyn's house, she's right there by the road, right through the driveway. And those logs need to be removed sometime before.
Okay. Got it?
That's my main thing.
Okay. Thank you, thank you Bob, we will look into it.
I appreciate y'all.
And your, your drainage concern is on our radar.
Thank you.
Alright, so, next, um, is our items for discussion. So, today is a budget workshop, and at this point, uh, we are, we are not allowing public comments of the, of the budget. We're going to have another council meeting next Thursday on the twenty-fourth, can y'all hear me okay? I never can quite get close enough to this. Um, and so, public comments will be allowed at that time, so you can take away what you're listening to today. And on Monday's agenda packet, a modified version of the budget, whatever we discussed today that needs to be added, uh, will be included in the budget. So, the budget we'll be looking at next Thursday will basically be this one with comments from council today and input from council today. And, um, we will be discussing the budget, finalizing our proposal for our property tax rate at next Thursday's meeting. And then we'll be looking for final budget approval and tax rate approval on the fourteenth of September. Uh, then that gets us ready for our October first deadline. So, uh, anyway, so starting off with this, we are gonna, gonna go through this in a somewhat detailed manner so that both citizens and council, and can you guys see this one okay? Alright, so, plus you've got a copy of it, I believe, um, with you. So, first of all, we're gonna, gonna run through where we're at right now. Uh, because the other thing we're gonna need to do next Thursday is to put an amendment to the budget together that has to be done by ordinance. Um, because due to all, due to all of our water line issues, um, we did bust our municipal budget this year. And, um, we're not allowed to do that. So, we actually have to amend our budget to show that we've transferred funds from our reserve funds into the current budget to cover that deficit. So, um, you can see where, and I'll give you all, you know, a bit of a rundown. The actual is, the money is actually posted to our, our accounting system. Um, most of them are asked up July thirty-first. A few of them, the bills have already been paid from, from August. So, the projections vary a little bit between it being ten months of, of actual data versus eleven. And the projection is based on what we anticipate spending on that line item up until October first. So, uh, you can see we're on track for collecting the actual property taxes, actually a little more than, than they projected. Um, and as I've been learning, the, the property tax, there's these different ceiling limits. And so, they give you projections at the start of the budget year, but then as the year progresses, these ceiling limits vary. And so, they give you an estimate, but they tell you it can be anywhere from eighty percent to a hundred percent of that number. So, that's why we don't, we don't hit that dead on. Plus, there are people who paid who were late, and then there's people who haven't paid yet. So, uh, you're never gonna hit that dead on. Uh, franchise fees, Esther and I have been looking into this. Um, she's gonna do some working on it in the next few weeks in, um, our proposed budget. We don't know why, but as we look back over the history, for some reason, uh, Southwestern Bell slash AT&amp;T, their franchise fees to us have gone dramatically down. Um, and we don't know why. So, we're gonna work on that, uh, because last year, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we actually collected a much higher number of franchise fees. So, something happened last year, and we don't know what it is, but I promise you Esther or Jessica will dig into it. Um, on the sales tax side, I guess people have been buying a lot of beer at Circle K. We've had, we've had a busy year at our, at our local, uh, businesses, which is a good thing. Um, and then, uh, building permits, as y'all have probably noticed, the building is down. And so, building permits are way off, uh, and we've lowered our projection for that for next year. On court fines, I would like, uh, Jennifer's not here. If each and every one of you can go thank our police officers and Jennifer, who is, I mean, she is knocking it out of the park. Uh, we have found boxes and boxes and boxes of fines that were, um, not pursued, uh, tickets that were not pursued. Um, she's knocking those out and getting them off the books, so we have a clean slate. But, um, our, as you can see, our court revenue has increased dramatically. Now, something I should point out, as we get down the budget, you'll notice that, um, we have large expenditures on court fees. So, this is what we actually collect from people who pay their tickets. Out of that, we have to pay a large portion of it to the state. So, you will see court fees listed as an expense. So, in general, if you just wanna look at this and think about how much money the city has to spend from court, um, we get about fifty-five percent of this amount, fifty-five to fifty-eight percent. Every ticket's a little different, so you can't say it's an exact number, it varies based on the tickets. Um, as you guys know, we voted to move some of our funds into interest-bearing accounts. Uh, that's giving us sixty thousand this year, it's projected to give us close to two-hundred-and-sixty thousand next year. Uh, that gave us a little boost. Um, once again, the, the beer is selling well, and, and actually, I guess, Venatos and the bistro are having good times. Um, park user fees, um, we still have to get a little bit better about how we track this one. I think this number is higher, um, but we, we've not been real consistent in how we code those checks that come in. So, uh, as, as a result, I've not been aggressive in what we're saying about it next year, but hopefully we'll see payments for that go up. On hotel motel tax, uh, we're down. Um, I don't think that's because occupancy is down. Um, as I've explained at other meetings, we've, uh, we did not use our software that we were using to track this. So, as we've been digging into it, and Tina has been, uh, like a terrier, going, going after it. Um, um, we've, we've found a lot of unregistered homes and a lot of people who are registered who have not paid their, paid their hotel motel tax. So, um, but I am, and as you'll look across, I am still projecting that our hotel motel tax won't be as high next year. Everybody is telling us that occupancy is trending down. So, um, that's, we, we don't have a good number this year because we've not been minding the ship real well on, on tracking and requiring and, and following up on getting those payments. So, uh, I, I, that's where we're at on hotel motel tax. And council, anytime y'all have a question, just, just jump in and, and ask for clarification or additional information.
I'll fix it too.
Good, good, good. Okay, on the swimming pool user fee, uh, we're up a lot this year. I think some of the things that Jessica's been doing, I think lowering the pass actually increased revenue. Uh, we also, I don't know if y'all know or not, we offered some, some, uh, week-long passes for a three or four-day pay um, that I think encouraged a lot of our STR people to maybe spend an extra five dollars at the pool that they weren't gonna spend otherwise. Marina's Marina, um, so court security and court technology, um, out of this fine amount, uh, this is the amount we collect, but certain funds of it, um, have to be spent on court security. They can't be spent on anything but court security.
They're dedicated.
Dedicated funds.
Just like hot tax, they're dedicated.
Yes, um, we've had some generous people with the park this year. Uh, on miscellaneous income, those account for two items. We had a lien, uh, paid off that we had placed on a home previously. Uh, Esther, what was that number again, about ten, fourteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand. And, uh, and then lo and behold, Esther gets a check from the IRS. Apparently, we've been paying an extra payroll deduction tax that we didn't need to pay. So, they gave us some money back, so, um-
Ten thousand.
Yeah, so, um, don't, don't expect to have that next year, but it was a nice bump this year. Um, so, uh, looking at this all the way, let me get this all the way over here. Uh, our revenue versus projection was higher. Um, the rollover funds are funds that we're actually using from previously dedicated projects. So, that's been sitting in reserve in our general fund checking account, and we just earmarked it, tagged it for expense this year. So, that provided a total income of two-point-seven, um, you know, and, and the projection was two-point-eight. We, we didn't use all of those rollover funds, so that's why we had projected spending more at the six-thirty-eight, and we only spent three-eighty of those rollover funds. Inspector permits, so, I think what happened here is our inspections, we went over, we're going over.
We're bad though.
Yes, absolutely.
I have, I, code five-three-three beach user fee.
Oh, yes.
What, what is that?
Well, we had put that in last year hoping to pursue that. So, there was a, it's kind of a wash, because we had a projection of thirty thousand on the beach user fee. And if we go down to special projects, you'll see where we had thirty thousand dedicated for what a startup cost need might be for the beach user fee, for whatever we were gonna need to comply with GLO, and whatever we needed to supply staff with software and tools they would need to implement. So, it was kind of a combined, we, uh-
Okay, it's just a placeholder, it's just dedicated to all the four hours.
Exactly, yes, any of these items that are over fifteen thousand dollars, they will require a special approval by council. But if they're not in the budget as a placeholder, then we can't do them, period. So, these are things that are, are, are out there as a proposal. And, uh, and like I said, they would have to be individually approved. Did I answer it?
Yeah, that answered the question.
Okay. Um, anyway, so on inspections, what, uh, what I believe has happened here? Permits were down, inspections were up. That's because so many of the permits were, were obtained a year ago. Uh, you obtain your permit, and then it requires four or five inspections. So, the permit was gotten a year ago, but the inspections are actually taking place for that. So, our inspection costs, um, will potentially go down next year as, as our building declines. But here again, we don't, we don't have good mechanisms to track that as, as well as I'd like to. We'll get better at that. Okay, so looking at salaries, our salaries are split between, um, our hot tax fund, our municipal fund, our city admin fund, and our court. So, you'll find salaries in each of those locations. Um, our salaries for this year do include a bump for a few people. Uh, I've made no secret that I wanna hire a city administrator, so there's funds in there for a city administrator. I've also added funds in there for a part-time, hopefully short duration, uh, court clerk, an additional assistant for Jennifer. Um, really, we have so much backlog to get through that, uh, to give her a little bit of help, uh, for a time period to get that knocked out would be very beneficial. Um, yeah. And, and there's, one of the other items that we've identified as a big gap is overall technology and IT support. So, we find a lot of issues with software and, and, and also, our protocols and processes around managing that are not what they should be. So, I've also added some funds in there for a part-time, uh, sort of IT technology support person. So, um, to, to help get our policies and practices in place. So, um, anyway, so-
So like, look like having the TMs, for instance, that would cover things like the TMs?
Yes, yes. The other thing too is, is we look at it, um, I mean, there's a lot of issues. You know, we have servers. Well, they're all backed up properly, but we're in a storm zone. And so, when is it time to migrate to a complete cloud-based environment?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible, exactly. And, and so, none of us, uh, and none of staff are IT experts.
I don't know any but.
And, and we pay, and, and, and we kind of pay a premium uh, for computer solutions to do that, and then it's not really in-house enough. Plus, we've identified that we have many gaps in our access protocols. So, um, we need a framework developed overall for how we're gonna manage IT security and how we're gonna manage software access. I'll also tell you that we don't, uh, Esther and I found, you know, as we're going through everything, we're still playing for Survey Monkey. Well-
What's that?
Survey.
It's the online survey tools that you can use to send out surveys.
So, there's, there's a lot of, as, as we've been digging through and looking back at historic pay per pay, it's like, "Oh, my gosh, why are we paying for that? Oh, my gosh, are we using that? Oh, my gosh, we're not really using that." So, having an IT person that's, that's kind of monitoring all the software we're using, are we getting value for it, are we paying the optimum price for it? So, uh, that's embedded in that, uh, city administration salary as well, uh, the split. Payroll taxes is just a straight, straight calculation. Uh, office supplies, we went way over on office supplies this year. We bought Jessica a desk, we bought Jennifer a laptop. There it is. Um, postage and printing are what they are. Um, telephone, I, I am kind of bouncing back and forth a little bit here, my apologies, but, but on the telephone, it's, we, we charge all kinds of odd things to telephone. We found printing there, we found postage there. But moving forward, I'm splitting it out into internet cable, technology, and telephone. So, it'll give us better clarity and tracking on what we're spending on these items. Technology will include all of our software applications we use, so we really can get a better rolled-up number of what we're spending on that front. I, uh, the insurance, I do not have good numbers yet for this year. It's on Esther's priority list for tomorrow. I, um, to get with TNL, we get all of our general insurance through TNL. It's the Texas Municipal League, it's their intergovernmental risk pool. Um, so, um, that has to be updated every year with, with who we're hiring, because we get workers comp from them, we get general liability, we get auto insurance, um, we get our fire, windstorm, everything comes from TNL. So, um, we're gonna get that, and I can't promise you that this split will look the same next Monday, because, um-
Depending on the numbers you get from them.
Yes, don't, don't have all the information. And I, we've also taken a stab that it's gonna be more this year than it was last year. So, my, my guess on that, I will tell you, it is a complete, ah, that looks about right, oh, that looks about right. Um, on legal fees, um, we're, we're down this year. I do, I do call the lawyers when I need to, but luckily here lately, we haven't had a need for them. Dues and registrations, um, you can look across and see that we're lowering that number a lot for next year. The reason for that is many, most of our software applications are charged to this dues and registration line.
Oh, that's, that's related.
And, yeah, and so, we're moving that into that technology line. So, when you see it, the totals kind of all add up the same. We're just coding them a bit different to give more clarity on where our expenses are. So, we can look for, so we can better know how to optimize all of our expenses and charges. Also, telephone is another area, we probably, probably have some savings for internet cable. Our Comcast bills read like something from a horror story. So, we're working on, um, on, uh, let's see, equipment, M&amp;R, um-
You skipped over the, um-
Audit.
The audit.
Yeah, audit for next year. So, this year, we've not paid for an audit fee, but we are on track to have our first twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty audit, uh, complete and expect that bill, and they've estimated that to be thirty thousand. So, I have fifteen thousand assigned to the general budget and fifteen thousand assigned to municipal budget. Um, and you will notice next year, we've got ninety thousand dollars targeted for audit. That's because we inspect, we are on target, we're scheduled to get three more done next year at thirty thousand each. That's ninety thousand, forty-five split between the two.
Between the two.
Yes. Um, also, if you jump across, you can see I, I added a piece for contract services. Um, that is kind of a catch-all bucket for things we identified throughout the year where we might need some additional resources. I know we use Calvinine, is it Calvinine Haven?
Cuh-huh.
Cuh-hun Consulting, um, we had to kind of put that in a miscellaneous bucket because we didn't have a place for it. They helped us achieve our improved flood rating number. So, your flood insurance will be less, um, because of the work they did on our behalf with lots of input from the city. So, um, I, I've wanted to call that out as separate. Um, there's also sometimes opportunities to, to hire a consultant to, to, to help us with a particular grant issue or to help us solve a particular drainage issue. Um, and this will give us that opportunity to, to call those out specifically.
And at least track what we're listing.
Yes, yes. Um, city expenses, those are, uh, gosh, what were those again Esther? We looked at them like three different times. Trying to think of the, the, the main expenses that are in that. Here again, it tends to be kind of a catch-all.
Yeah, I don't know.
Kitchen sink.
Huh?
Kitchen sink.
Kitchen sink, yes, it, it, it is, a lot of things go in here.
But if I came in and said, uh, and, and said Esther, what's, what's, and you were in front of your computer, and I asked for city expenses- and I asked for city expenses, you'd be able to open it up and go one, two, three, this is what we used it for?
Right.
Great, thank you.
Um, retirement, um, for, for, for y'all's information, we put ten percent of everybody's base salary into a retirement account. Uh, I've had multiple requests to look into a program called TMR, TMRS. It's Texas Municipal Retirement System. And uh, we've had the gentleman come out, um, we owe him a little bit of information, which we'll get to him next week. And under that program, um, we won't cost the city anymore. We'll keep both the employees whole and us whole. Um, but it, it looks, it's a really good program.
So, and the, the advantage of this, I'm just gonna state it just, the advantage of this is that we can attract people with, that are under that retirement plan to come work for us.
That's right. That's, that's, that's a big part of it, but the other part of it is the ten percent that we put in now. No employee matching goes with it, the ten percent. But it is, it's kind of like if I gave Edward Jones a thousand dollars and then left. Right? And he would do whatever he wanted to with it. So the fund has actually lost money uh over the last two years. Versus TMRS has continued to grow at five percent. Uh, they just have been in the, they're a great investment management protocol. They guarantee a five percent rate for employees. They guarantee, right now, I think it's a, I'm probably making these numbers up. Uh, it was something like a three percent guarantee for the portion we put in. Um, and there are caps, so even if they do better than that, um, the employee or the employer doesn't get the full benefit of that, but there's a minimum threshold. So you'll never do worse than this, but just like any other investment platform, uh, it can, you, you won't capitalize on their full, they gotta make money too. But, um, but it does have bare minimums, so it can, continues to grow. Uh, here again, if, once I get all the details for this, that will of course take city council involvement and approval to, to migrate us over to that. And one of the advantages is, we looked at it in the past, but you have to buy into it based on the years of service of your employees. Well, we have a very new staff. And, and the, the oldest employee we have, Mr. Gillen, is, is retiring soon too. So the cost of our buy-in at this point in time is very low. So uh, it's a good time to look into it. Um, let's see, equipment, the contingency is, is just a catch-all. Um, equipment purchases can be, um, the filing cabinet, uh, new weed eater. We haven't used mileage reimbursement, but um, one of the policies we are gonna be working on this year is our, is our HR policy and embedded within our HR policy is gonna be a mileage reimbursement policy. You know, and I would like to see council members utilize that also for when they, um, when they go do things on behalf of the city. Um, they shouldn't cost you anything to be a council member. So I'd like to spell that out and make sure that everybody's clear and aware and that we buy into that. On city hall, uh, janitorial services have gone up some. Um, we, I think we can optimize this this year and, and, and we will.
Well, whoever's doing this, it's doing a great job, that's for sure.
Uh, Wendy does do a good job, and then David Torres, who we kind of call our city services person, he does a little bit of everything.
TVs.
Yeah, he mounted the TVs today. He, he just takes care of everything for us, and he takes out the trash on a regular basis, and if there's a mess, he cleans it up. So he keeps it in between the routine cleaning. Um, electricity, you know, pretty straightforward. Um, water and sewer, I, I apologize, we have not had time to dig into our own city water bills enough. Um, between the pool, the park, um, city hall.
Sewer plant.
And the sewer plant. So um, it's not huge amounts of money, it's not gonna bust the budget one way or another, but it's on mine and, it's on Esther's, it's on mine and Esther's list to say where are we at on our water usage and, 'cause we haven't spent what we said it was gonna cost. Uh, building M and R, um.
That's a big one.
Huh?
I said that, that looks like to be the big number.
It is a big number, and um, it's, we didn't spend all that much this year, um, but I projected we need to spend more next year. Uh, Police Chief Garvey has a mold issue in his office. I know we discovered that we've got some very sad duct work up there, and it's condensing and sweating. And, and that is, for health reasons, that's gonna have to be addressed. We also have a leaking roof over the EMS apartment. Um, we've got insurance coming out to look at that to try to get some, redup, at least a little bit on that. But that's why that number is still high for next year. And uh, and also when I look at projections, that, on, on Mondays, you might see that projection going up as far as expense for this year.
It's not quite a better total, just based on two, two things, I just heard.
Yeah.
Mold baiting might cost you twenty thousand dollars.
Yes.
And that's not including any repairs to duct work or anything else.
So, anyway, that, that one's probably gonna go up. Uh, the, the mold issue just came to our attention yesterday and, and this morning. Um, uh, city hall equipment M and R, this is for a multitude of things. Uh, here again, we've got insurance, um, and, and then we have some miscellaneous expenses. And we've lowered those mis, I don't like miscellaneous line items. You can see I've added some additional uh coding.
That helps to clarify what you're for.
Yeah, uh, so we've lowered miscellaneous for next year. Um, the, the city park is, is pretty straightforward. We, we have spent um a, a lot on the M and R and a little more on the mowing. Um.
The park is looking really good, by the way.
Yeah, the park is looking.
Yeah, the best it's looked at in a long time.
Yes, yes. So um, anyway, in, in court, the um, the salaries, you can see, they go up quite a bit next year. The reason for that is in the past, Ms. Carmack, our court clerk, her costs were distributed between um court, pool, and marina. And uh, 'cause she looked after those things. And, and uh, clearly y'all can see in the revenue we're bringing in from the court, it justifies having someone dedicated to that, to that effort. Um, and then that salary also includes the assistant that I've proposed. Um, so uh, you know, there's the basic court cost. Clerk expense was a little bit up this year. Um, Jennifer had to go to training, it's required to, to be recognized. There's, there's lots of uh, security issues involved with the court clerk, and she has to be trained and certified. And then also, we purchased a new program that allows her to text. So it takes our landline and makes it textable. So um, on our tickets, it now says you can text. She used to spend probably two hours a day listening to the sob stories and, and the reason that they didn't deserve a ticket. And now that two hours a day is, now she spends fifteen minutes texting instead of two hours listening.
It is bilingual.
And, yes, it's, it's bilingual.
It has a translation.
Uh, piece with that texting tool. Um, so that's why that number is higher. Uh, court retirement, straight factor. Um, our group health next year, we pay completely for an employee. We don't pay anything for their spouse or dependents. But our group health, um, which we also pay minimum dental, and we pay a, a minimum life insurance policy, and we pay AD and D. That part for next year is projected to be one thousand three hundred sixty dollars, right Esther? So um, that's per employee, per month. So those, those group health numbers are pretty high. Um, we have been speaking to some other providers. We use T and L for that also, they provide Blue Cross Blue Shield. But we are looking at, uh, are there any better alternatives for that? Um, the path, um, here again, remember I told you that you would see these state criminal cost and fees going out the door? So there they are going out the door.
I think it's a lot more than people realize.
Oh, on what we pay to the, to the state?
Yeah, what we have to pay to the state.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you, you've always heard that speed traps don't really provide that much revenue to the city. Uh, the state passed a law a number of years ago that said, we get, we get a big piece of this.
Fifty percent on the dollar.
Uh, it's not quite, it's, they, they, they get about forty-five, we get about fifty-five. Um, also just, so you know, our judge has been telling us that our fee structure, we need to be a little bit more aggressive in line with other communities. So if we hire that assistant court clerk and allow Jennifer a little more time to work with staff and also help bring forward, uh, most of those, we have to change by ordinance, 'cause our fee structure is part of the ordinance. And uh, we're gonna be, be working on that next year too, so hopefully this court revenue will go up even more. There's a lot of little nuances about court that I'm learning. The judge is amazing, and he's here to help us make money, let me tell you. Um, we cover, uh, we provide EMS with their apartment, and, and we cover the insurance on that. But it's nice to have them right here, so I, I think it's a good positive arrangement. Looking at our expense in projects, um, we have leased our police equipment. So two years ago, this line item was needed because we had to pay upfront a portion of that lease. But uh, it's actually not needed anymore, uh, yet. It, it might begin in the future. Um, park fund, we purchased all of that, so, so those are zeros. The street project reserve, as you know, we finished the street project about a year and a half ago, but, but the county kind of fell asleep and they never sent us a bill. So they first sent us a bill, but there was still some work that we were doing, and we had extra funds left over, so they came back and did a few more of the roads. But um, we are still waiting, uh, Gil's been doing a great job tracking it down and meeting with the county engineer. So we have a preliminary invoice, we're expecting the final invoice in the next couple of weeks. Um, it's, it's around three, three seventy-six, three seventy-eight. Um, so that was expected to be four twenty-three, so the county brought it in under that amount. And this was about a two million dollar proj, one point, one point five million dollar project, or one point six? And uh, so some of it was from grant money, and then the county, and the county matched our funds. Um, bulkhead projects, um, and, and we'll go through the expense projects in more, in more detail on, when, when we look at for next year, on what we're anticipating there. But um, under this general fund reserves, um, we are finally spending some FEMA money to put some doom walkovers, and there was a portion of that that we had to pay. Um, so. We also have to pay a portion of our beach renourishment program. Um, it's not in the budget for next year, but you'll see it in the budget for uh twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Our portion of that payment, can you remember the number, Robert?
No, Robert, no.
One?
If it's, uh, is a percentage, I don't really remember, we'll call it down.
Um, it's like a two million, three million dollar project, and, and we do have to pay a small amount of that. But um, it's in final approval and engineering, and then they have to get sand contractors, and they have to get bids. And they're actually not expecting to start that project for another um year and two or three months. So it will probably hit very early in our budget cycle for twenty-four, twenty-five. But it's not, not in here yet, because the GLO tells me it's not gonna hit our budget yet. But we will look at it on our, on our long-range outlook. Hotel motel, so we talked about a portion of our salaries are split between that. Um, once again, you know, telephone, retirement, um, all of our beach maintenance, cleaning the trash cans, picking up trash, moving driftwood off of it. Um, a portion of the electricity and water and all of the insurance associated with city hall. Hot tax allows us to pass on some of our administrative overhead uh, to be covered with hotel motel tax. And, and that's what this does. Um, the swimming pool is also paid for out of hotel motel tax. Um. Sorry about that. Okay, so um, once again, salary payroll taxes. There's the pool. Um, police department, um, their UTV gas is incorporated into this. So um, a little higher than expected there. Police salaries. Their vehicles. Retirement, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. Rose Beach and Canals. Esther, remind me again, while our General Lemanard went up. We looked at that one ten times too. What, I think we had, that was a big item today. I know.
Was it the Kim's?
No, that was in, that was in hotel motel tourism, which was high. Anyway. We can pull that note up. Uh, we pay the appraisal district?
I think some of that we saved it too, when we put in the street, some things we backed.
Yeah, yeah, it, it was.
So, you know, I'm sitting here looking at at what we're projecting closing out in October this year, and then I move over and look at what you're looking at for.
Next year.
Next year.
Mm-hmm.
So I see where it's moving around a lot.
It is moving some, yes.
I'm thinking, I, I like that, we're recognizing that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it is, it is moving some.
I mean, we're not thinking, I mean, we're actually projecting.
Yes. Yes, we are. Okay, so when you get down to the, to the bottom from looking at this year, you can see our total expense was two point three. Our income, which include a portion of rollover funds, was two point seven. So we had an excess of three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars in our budget. Um, when you do the math, your encumbered hot tax fund, what this means is we collect so much hot tax, by law, we're only allowed to spend that hot tax money on items that put beds, heads in beds, right?
They're restricted.
And, and so we're limited on what we can spend that money on. So this encumbered hot tax money is money we collected in that hotel motel tax, but I don't have authorized places to spend it on. So it will actually go to, into the bank, and it'll sit in our general account, but it will be encumbered, it will be earmarked that I can't spend it uh, for anything else.
So where did we see that in here?
Oh.
Your motel line line, or?
No, that's what.
Just talking about doing the math.
That's, oh, yeah, then if you go up and you, you capture everything that was authorized with hotel motel.
Yes.
Right, and it comes up with a number.
Yeah.
And, I, I mean the.
And then you get so much.
Yes, so. Yes, so the, the three hundred and ninety-two dollars, I subtract off what my hotel motel expenses were. And the leftover amount is what I can't spend anything on. So when I took my total hotel motel tax revenue and subtracted off all the authorized expenses.
Including the swimming pool.
Including the swimming pool and, I mean, we have authority to do things with the beach. We get to use a certain percentage of our overall cost for, for administration can go to hotel motel. Uh, the park goes to hotel motel and, anyway, those are the things that go there.
So the encumbered money will actually be kept trapped or trapped in another?
Yes, so we'll have a general ledger within QuickBooks, so it'll still reside in our, well, it'll reside in our money market again, our general fund money market account. But it will be earmarked in our QuickBooks that we have a five million dollar budget, a five million, billion dollar balance in our general fund, you know, then it will show that one point six million of that is from encumbered hot tax.
And then we also have to keep track of court's technology and court security.
Yes, that's right.
And that has to be, can only be.
We also have to keep track of any other grant money. We have two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in CARES Act grant money that is sitting in the special C D, their special account. And we have not moved forward, I don't know what we're gonna do with that money, Robert.
I, 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 well, this is not a discussion, I've talked to consultants and because it's almost, I mean, an, an old subject, I don't know what we're gonna, you're right, I just.
The money, the money was given to us about two and a half years ago. And the money was targeted to help people who had suffered financial setbacks during COVID. So we were supposed to set up a process where we had a method for them to apply for assistance. And, and then we had a documented process where we could review their, the validity of their claims and then track how we gave them money. But we, we received that money, but never set up that process.
There was no mechanism.
There was no mechanism, so.
Can we just create a game?
Not zero.
No, you can't distribute it without, there's guidelines on the criteria that the people have to meet. And then you have to have the process in place to accept those applications, review those applications, distribute the funds. And, and we never did that.
And very little of it was, before I mentioned, for somebody to track those funds and do, I mean, that is like five percent.
Yeah, yeah, so we had been in, my understanding is the city had been in conversation with consultants to do this for us.
Grant work, yes.
But it just, the, the trigger never got, we just, it just never got implemented. So I don't know what we need to do with that money. I have not had a chance to reach out to the federal government and say, you want it back? What, what, but I can't spend it legally on anything without that process.
This is, are there any other items like that, too, that big money should?
No.
This is, that's the only one?
That's it. And, and it's really unusual because they sent a check and usually it's a reimbursement project.
Yes.
And this is, you know.
Yep, yep.
And the reason it's usually a reimbursement for things like this, we had no mechanism. I had not found a plan, I talked to, to one police chief, Brad, and he, he said, well, it's a supply, he just applied and that was it. Without finding the nuts and bolts of how to, how to work it out.
Yeah, so anyway, it's, um. There's also, there's also a large amount of FEMA money out there.
Yeah, but that's what I use, those are the walkovers.
Yeah, there, there was additional FEMA money too.
For that part of twenty twenty?
Huh?
Part of that?
Yeah, part of that's for twenty twenty. And then, and then there's another portion for the dune walkovers.
Can we use any of that for drainage?
Um, I don't know, Taz, that's a good question.
You know, for speech co-er has had no drainage.
This is true, this is true.
Yeah, because I know there was some additional FEMA monies that were still out there that we didn't utilize because we never completed the full, uh, getting the easements. We got most of them, but not all of them. And FEMA wouldn't move forward on some of our pro, proposed projects because we didn't complete that task. This has been five years ago. So, I don't know. With a little, with a little extra staff, we can, we can tackle some of these skeletons in our closet and, and figure it out.
Well, I'd be happy to call the federal FEMA and see if we can get some, at least some.
Direction.
Guidance and direction, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Okay, on, where are we at? Okay, so you can see we, we have additional unencumbered funds. Okay, where are you at from current? Okay, so I'm at the very end of general budget. Right under.
What page are you on?
Page four, ma'am.
Page four, thank you, I'm on, I'm on my computer, on my page. Yeah, you see, you see where municipal fund is highlighted on the left?
Yes.
So just up from that.
Thank you.
So encumbered hot tax and then we have unencumbered funds. So we're projecting we're gonna have roughly four hundred thousand dollars excess revenue in our general fund account. Now remember, three hundred and eighty thousand of that came out of the bank as, as rollover dedicated funds. But that was already budgeted and approved. And so unencumbered funds are roughly two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And you'll find when we get down to the bottom of our municipal fund, I'm proposing that we use that money to help offset our busted budget on the municipal side. Okay, so allocated donations, as you guys know, you pay five dollars? Four dollars, three in one or four in one?
It's four in one.
Four in one. Dollars on your water bill, it's a voluntary donation to the fire department and the EMS. At any time you want to withdraw that, you can call the water department and take it off. But we collect it from your bill and transfer it over to help our great firefighters. So that's what this is, this is where we collected the money. So it's, it's a revenue up here, then you'll see us pass it out again.
EMS donations in the same category, right?
Yes. Yes, we, we donate to the, to the EMS as well. So looking at revenues, the, the water M and R is, is actually our application fee. And, and then security deposits. And you, you see where next year, I don't.
I see that, you see earlier than that.
It's because the deposit is not something I can spend. The deposit is something that is due back that person.
It's not city money.
It's not city money, I just, I just have to put it in a holding account. So we, we have to have a line item to, to, to track it to so we can balance our checkbook. But then we will zero it out and put it over in a separate tracking mechanism where it's, it's held to pay people back.
And you have an asset from one side of it, a liability with the other.
Yes, but we've never done it that way.
So we're, we're gonna do it that way in the future, correct?
Yes, yes.
Wait, I don't have any complaints.
We're gonna do it that way. The next line items are, I just kind of carry over. So on our customer service inspection, inspections callouts, we are gonna be putting everybody on notice. We are going to be implementing a fee structure for callouts. Right now, it's amazing how much we pay Branch to go turn people's water valves on at their house. So. People go out of town, be it an S T R or a homeowner, and they're gonna be gone a while. So they close the water valve at their house, between the meter and their house, they'll have a valve and they shut it off. And then Johnny cousin comes to stay, Johnny cousin goes in and says, I don't have water. And they call the city. And Dan Branch gets called, Dan Hudson with Branch gets called. And he goes out and he says, your water meter looks fine, oh, let's try opening this valve.
Oh, no.
And the city gets charged for that. So we're gonna, one of the ordinances or fee structures we're gonna propose in the next month or two is seventy-five dollar callout if it's eight to five Monday through Friday, a hundred and fifty dollar callout if it's evenings Monday through Friday. And the weekends?
Three hundred dollars.
Three hundred dollars on the weekend. Because Branch charges us a lot of money to drive out here and go turn your water valve on for you. It's, it's a big, it's a big expense to us. It probably happens six times a month, seven times a month.
S T R is also.
S T Rs are the biggest, the maids, the maids are trained to turn it off on their way out. That's just what they're told to do. And then the next, then the winter comes in and, and they, they see the emergency water number on our website. They call and say, we don't have water. So that's what that inspection callout, uh, new revenue line is for next year.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah, it'll probably be more than that, but people will learn.
It's a good number now.
People will learn. So, um, yeah, it's, it's not the city's job to go turn your water line on. Uh, sewer service fees are just what we collect for your sewage.
Garbage revenue sales.
Right, um, and you'll see that's, the, we are going to propose, we've talked about that, our, our garbage cost is going up.
So this reflects the culture, new contract, that's all the difference.
Yes, to reflect the cost of the new contract. And you'll, you'll also see if you go back up to the new budget and the general fund for, for, for beaches and hotel motel, we've pulled out the costs from our general trash contract of dumping the dumpsters. That cost used to be borne by the residents. That cost was distributed across your monthly charge. So we pulled that out as an exact city expense to try to keep the residents' trash bill as low as possible. Yeah, so there's our water service fees. Looking at the line item for projected budget on water service fees, that, that is increasing our water rate a little bit. I still don't have an exact proposal for that to, to look at. I, I know we're gonna be raising the overage charge. And we're gonna be doing some projections on hopefully fewer water line leaks and, and not lost water from that. And then we'll come up with, you know, it, it might be a dollar or two in the general water rate increase as well. So we're probably gonna be looking at a four to five dollar increase in your water bill. Sewer rates aren't changing, but the trash rate and the water rate will be increasing some to, to cover our cost. And the cost of operating.
The water tap fees. I, I, I have no problem with it, but we don't keep that with the permit?
So that was a mistake.
Excuse me?
That was coded incorrectly. We figured it out that it wasn't supposed to be there, it's actually supposed to go to the water service. No, it's going to, yeah, the sewer services.
Okay.
Well, that was on the sewer side. The water tap, the water tap fees, we've actually never done a good job. Um, it's kind of like that beach user fee thing, right, and some of the other, like the, the security deposits. But on the water tap fees, we've not tracked that we collected this money from an individual and then we paid this money to Branch. So that, that, I, right now, I can't actually tell you how that water tap fee gets coded because we don't have record of it and we haven't found where it was coded anywhere yet. But moving forward, I can promise you this, it's going to be right.
Well, you have a number, you have code code numbers.
We've had one before, we just couldn't, we just couldn't, it just wasn't tracked with that level of detail.
And we're charging way below what.
Yes, and, and we're also going up on those rates because the cost of tying in has gone up dramatically. Okay, so the next, the next line down after our water revenues and, and that total revenue line, in last year's budget, we did transfer from a general fund down to, to have a balanced budget. So you can see I didn't do it. But we do it at the end with our unencumbered funds. And so actually last year transferring that to seventy-one, the way, it, it really was not legal to, to do it that way because part of that money they were transferring down was hot tax money. That, that technically couldn't be done that way. But, but that's paper. What we're doing moving forward is capturing it correctly by the requirements of the hot tax law. Hotel motel law. Okay, so expenses on sewer. You can see they've been high. So we had to put in, we had to rework two new lowers. That was the, the majority of our sewer repairs. And, and our contractor fee is higher than, than we had budgeted for. Here again, for, for water, that's where our biggest bust has been, on water repairs. We are holding Branch more accountable to their contract. And we're, we're seeing a slight reduction in those costs, not enough yet, but we're continuing to, to, we're, we're getting a little bit bigger hammer all the time. Then, then the rest is the percentage of our overhead that, that we apply to operating our municipal system. And you, you get down to the bottom and total expense for that, we go, then we have our, our garbage expense. Our, we have to pay sales tax on, on what we pay for garbage service, it's, it's a taxable service. When we get down to, to allocated funds for projects, the Black Bear lift station was done a couple of years ago, so it's off the, the list. The water line project, as you know, that project is just finishing. And we still have one more payment to make on that, which is why you see the difference between actual cost and projected cost. Uh, the lift station at, at Bayside, that's an emergency project. So that will finish up this budget cycle. So that payment is, is indicated there as well. Council approved that for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, but there was a previous approval of fifteen thousand for engineering. So that gives the combined one fifty. And that extra one twenty-five to one thirty-five is for a fence better than galvanized. So it will hold up and continue to look better. And the plan is across the next ten years to go around and improve the fencing on all of the lift stations so they're not a rustiness.
Can we at some point include a, a new fence or something for the park? That's starting to look pretty.
Oh, you're right. I, I didn't add.
That, that could be from hot tax, that could be hot tax for that.
Yeah, it can, it can be hot tax. Let me add that to next year's budget.
Oh, they're here, okay.
That code is already coded?
You're right, it's about to fall down, it's, it's getting to be a hazard. I'm afraid somebody's gonna go to open that gate and the whole thing's gonna come with them. Thanks for that, Taz, I, I forgot that one. Okay, then, we're gonna talk about next year's projects and next year's budgets. Okay, then, we're gonna talk about next year's projects and next year's budget, following and understanding of, of this year. So we'll go through it, although we've been covering it some as we go. So there's our total allocated funds for projects. Oh, the other thing I should do. Up on the sewer plant for cost out the door this year. Here, where'd it go? Repairs sewer. If you look at item two hundred and eleven.
Two hundred and eleven?
Yeah, code two hundred and eleven. Expenses sewer. I did add some extra, that, there's some, some extra anticipated expenditure from there. Our, um, our generator at the plant is not doing what it needs to be doing.
I got it now.
Sorry, I had volunteers set to go work on it and look at it, but I had to halt that. And now we're in emergency season and, anyway. I, I'm not, I'm just saying, so, um, we're bringing out, um, in the, in our emergency planning meeting the other day-
Let's talk after the meeting, show it away, please.
Okay. So, um,
so the fifty thousand dollars is, is an emergency thing for the gen, for-
Well, it's actually about twelve thousand. I'm, I'm anticipating needing to spend, uh, on that generator and that, that number could go up. But it's, it's something that, uh, TCEQ has identified as a gap. And, um, it, I did have volunteers look at it, uh, two months ago and they got it running. But it needed an oil change and, and then I got another level of volunteer who actually has the expertise to, to do the load test. Cause we've not been able to run it under load. And I'd also like to point out that we had volunteers go and get our portable generator running. And it's up and running now and, and ready for storm season as well. That was done like two months ago. So, anyway, um, so where we're at, uh, when we get all said and done is our, our total expense was, was quite a bit higher than our income. So, um, if you go back and remember that in, unencumbered fund number, we can transfer two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars from the leftover from general fund. And so one thing I am kind of asking, this is not an official approval, but, uh, in, in unofficial input. By, by law, we have to do an amended budget. And so I plan to have that ready to go for next council meeting on the twenty-fourth. So, uh, assuming council is all okay with the numbers of, as we've projected, our unencumbered funds in our amended budget, it will be this projected line showing moving two hundred and twenty-eight thousand of unencumbered funds from general fund to municipal fund. And then we will show that we are moving the three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from our municipal checking account from reserve funds. Uh, unallocated funds from municipal that, uh, to, to fill in this deficit. So that'll be proposed at the next meeting. My ordinance, we have to adopt an amended budget.
So we are actually almost, well, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars is the deficit. Is that the minus number that's here?
No, no. No, we're in the pink.
Okay, we're looking at the pink.
So we're actually a five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar deficit in the municipal budget.
Okay.
But we can move leftover funds from the general budget.
Okay.
Of that two hundred and twenty-eight, five ninety-nine. So that transfer from general fund is our unencumbered hot tax funds.
Gotcha.
So any, any questions about that, the numbers or about the process? Because that is what we will be bringing forward to council for approval on the twenty-fourth. Is, is an ordinance to approve that amended budget. Good? Okay. I mean, it's not an official vote, it's just a, a verbal consensus to move forward.
It's, let's, let's move it, we gotta do what we gotta do.
Exactly. Okay, so, um, does, do, do any of y'all have any questions over the existing current year budget?
No, this is, this is, um, been, I've come to council meetings for years and this is the first time that I really have a better understanding of, uh, what's really going on here. So thank you very much, Mayor Bauer. Thank you, Esther.
You're welcome.
May I, I'll give you a say that. You're gonna do a hell of a job.
Yeah, Esther's amazing. She's detailed, she's focused, and she has the magic Excel fingers and magic on QuickBooks. It's like she hovers, she hovers and the numbers go up.
We're not worried.
Anyway, so, okay.
Let it take a minute.
Looking, looking at our proposed budget for next year, um, add the law and taxes. This, this, so this is all new to me and, and sorry, I'm being a teacher up here. But the way the taxes work, I never understood this in the past. Your, by, by state law, a municipality cannot collect more than three point five percent more in property tax than they collected the year before. And so your tax rate changes every year based on your current evaluations. So our valuations have gone up this year. So you'll see that our tax rate has actually gone down. So if my memory serves me correctly, the tax rate that goes along with this projected taxes is what we call the voter approval rate, which includes a three point five percent increase in revenue over last year. The maximum amount allowed by law. And, um, and that tax rate, I believe, is one point three eight, uh, mils, uh, evaluation rate. So you can also, uh, they also provide for you the new revenue. And they would calculate that rate based on our predictions last year of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. So what I'm proposing is that we go, we do request the tax rate that gives us the three point five percent increase in, uh, in valuation. Or in total property tax, not valuation, total property tax. And you'll see as we go through this, um, a lot of it is because of the project work we need to do on our water lines and, um, and our sewer plant. So, but, uh, but, but this is where, you know, from an input perspective, um, we can suggest anything in between. It's up to this council to put forward, uh, proposed tax rate. So, okay, so let's look at the budget. As we indicated, franchise fees are, are down. So I estimated that, that Esther's gonna do her magic and figure out a, a little bit while it's down. So hoping this number will be a little higher, but we've not done to the bottom of it yet. On, on sales tax, um, we, you know, I kinda picked a little bit less than we got this year. Assuming our popularity is still gonna be high, that, that at some point it could decline. So this dedicated one percent sales tax. Currently, we charge a one percent tax, sales tax. By state law, you're allowed to charge two percent. We're about the only place I know that you charge seven point two five percent. Everywhere else you go, they charge eight point two five percent. The challenge with that is the one percent is a general revenue, I can spend it on whatever I wanna spend it on.
Yes.
The other one percent has to be dedicated. A new, a new bill was passed and best I can read, I still have a call to Olson and Olson are legal. Gil already checked T M L for me. The, um, the one percent sales tax, I'm pretty sure we can spend all one percent. But it's specialized on what you can spend it on. It's dedicated, it's either for crime prevention, it's for an economic development program, or it's on street repairs. So my proposal, and this has to go before the voters, so it has to go on the ballot. I don't think, Taz, I just don't think we're gonna be able to get it on the ballot in November. Because first city council has to approve an ordinance, uh, recommending the tax rate, what it's for. And, uh, and, and for it to be placed on the ballot. I don't think we can get that done in time to get it on the November ballot. Plus, we absorb cost for an election that we have no other reason to go to. So we will probably look at, my proposal is, and we'll be talking about this as we find more about it, is that council approve us putting this on the ballot for May. And, uh, as we all know, many of our streets in this neighborhood flood with just a little high tide. Any of you that live off of Jamaica Cove know that, uh, you're, you need a truck, uh, many times when the rest of the city doesn't. So my proposal is that we do this and we start putting that money in, in a, in an account. And, and then we use that to raise our, to raise those roads that are problematic. We can also use this fund at any time just to fix potholes and, and to do any street repairs. It can also be used for sidewalks. So if we found, uh, streets that are very busy and, and have a lot more traffic, we could, we could fill them in and, and run an extra sidewalk. So, um, it's in the budget. It's something that we'll continue to talk about and decide if we wanna bring it forward. We also have to find out, when you read, Taz pulled, she did tons and tons of search and I've got a book like this with all the different information, uh, she found on it. And it's a bit confusing, cause one, one law says you can't do more than five, than a half a percent on street tax. But then H B five seventeen passed in twenty fifteen, very much reads like as long as that one percent is dedicated and you specify what it's dedicated for, uh, you can charge the full one percent. And so this fifty, so that, not in this year's budget, but in next year's budget, that would give us another hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in sales tax revenue. And, and recognize that the majority of this sales tax comes from visitors to our community. Yes, I know we all go to the hardware store and we all go to Benadryl's and we all go to the bistro, but resident, I mean, visitors supply most of these funds. So the fifty-four thousand is based on four months of revenue after we approve it in May. Okay, building permits, we've seen a decline in building permits, hence the decline. Court fines, I actually think this is gonna be up higher next year. But when Posey, when, when Lieutenant Posey pulled numbers, uh, the tickets in December were-
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, the tickets in June were-
Three ninety-two.
So, so we've really been kicking it lightly.
Tis the season.
But, um, anyway, that's gonna, I, I, I actually expect that to be higher. And Jennifer was quite disappointed that, uh, that I wasn't, wasn't gonna task her with five hundred thousand in court fines. Cause she's positive she can take it up. Uh, interest income, we talked about that. Our mixed beverage tax fee, park user fee.
We should be able to get more for that. We need to advertise that the park's available for rent.
Yes, we could do that on our visitor page, um, so, um-
It used to be, it was, because I live across the street from the park, it was rented every weekend, twice a weekend, many times.
Yeah.
But, you know, we just need to remind people it's available.
Yeah, thank you.
Can people rent it outside if they make a beach?
It's a public park, yeah.
It's a, it's like, she has that point.
Yeah, yeah, we should advertise it more. Like I talked about, our swimming pool user fee is up. I hope y'all will all come either watch or bring your doggy to the pool, to the pooch pool party on September ninth.
For balls.
And the pool will be plenty clean by next season.
That's what they, we cut it to.
And the filters, the filters will be clean dog here. Marina. We didn't do it this year, we hope to do it next year. We're trying to put in an S T R pass, kinda like a door hanger thing, where they buy a Marina pass for their S T R house. It saves them having to come up here and buy one every Friday and it saves Jessica having to say, you got five minutes to get here, to get your Marina pass. So, but that should generate a little extra revenue on, uh, from a Marina fee. We talked about the court security and the court technology. The, the court technology, we, we have monies, I mean, that, that money goes for what we use to manage our court. The court security, we have not done that. We are bringing, um, projects forward. I wish all of you would come up here on court day. And you would all be, you would all be appalled.
I came up, may I say, I came up a week last Friday. And, um, the employees are doing a great job, but we, I talked to, um, our judge, Pat Monks, and our prosecuting attorney, and they have suggestions on how we could improve things. And, uh, what they talked about would increase our security for our employees. And, um, because it's, it's a different kinda crowd that comes here. That's the nicest way to put it.
Well, and, and we know the current, um, Jennifer who went to that training, they came back and one of the sessions she had was around identifying risk and, and, you know, they told all the horror stories where, where people got mad, cause they were coming in to pay a fine and they just got angry all about it and picked up a pen and stabbed the clerk, you know? And, uh, we, we don't, we don't have, uh, scanners or we don't search, we don't. I mean, people just walk in and they're roaming everywhere and all the doors are open. And if anybody lost it, we could have a major postal event, go, going postal event on our hands. This building was not designed with that in mind, but, um, it's, uh, we, you know, talk, talked to chief and Posey about it and so we are gonna be spending some of this court security money to do a little bit of revamping and, and making our, helping our employees be safer. Okay, where are we at? Revenue, court, okay, part donations, miscellaneous income. There's still odd stuff that comes in from time to time, so it's in there. Miscellaneous fees, um, we've talked a lot of, this is where, like, if you go to get your, your, uh, property replanted, we charge you for that. And we've never had a real good way of tracking it. It ends up going in about a hundred different line items and you can't really see. And, and here again, it should be what we collect, but then we have to pay court costs to plaid it and that needs to be timed directly to make sure we're covering our time and the actual cost associated with those exercises. So that's what the, the miscellaneous fee income is. Uh, here again, here's your beach user fee, right? It was in and out. We intend to bring that forward for discussion and possible implementation, but here again, lots of discussion around that. It's, it's, it's here so that we can move on it if we need to. As an expense, um, you know, ins- inspection permits. So, um, salaries, I am proposing more. We need a city administrator. This also includes some slight increases for, um, a few of our employees who are taking on greater roles and, and more responsibility. I have added a training line item, we've never had that in the past. So my, my philosophy is, uh, anytime you employ a person, uh, be it a city or a business, your goal should be to develop those- Your goal should be to develop those people to their greatest potential. And, uh, and you should provide the training and the opportunity that they can continue to advance and enhance their skills. So, um, that's why training's in there.
I think that that should actually go up a little more, just because. We, our city administrator could take classes to become certified. Our city secretary can, and our court clerk can.
This is, this is repeated in every salary section.
Oh.
So it's allocated amongst the sections. It's allocated amongst the sections.
Okay, I didn't realize that, thank you.
First time I went through this, I asked the same question.
And then you saw it, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, oh, gotcha. Uh, yeah, it's, it's divided based on how we're allocating salaries and across all our different areas. Um, office supplies, we spent a bunch this year, here again, the desk and all that. So, you can kinda just, I've, I've split up internet technology and telephone. Um, we've talked about that. Uh, group health is going up just a lot. And it was misrepresented before. So, the health cost was never distributed, uh, evenly across all the different groups. And now they are. So the totals come out to be representative, uh, in alignment with last year, they're just in different places. Um, legal notices, election expense, um, legal fees, here's our audit number, we talked about that already. Uh, dues and registration went down because we've added that technology line. Uh, cause right now dues and resignation, dues and registrations have, have most of our software applications. Uh, equipment M and R. And, and anytime you guys want a two-hundred-thousand line, uh, Excel spreadsheet, Esther can pull this. Where every expense under these codes are captured for a timeframe indicated. It's kinda frightening because, anyway, there, there was some stuff that makes it about three thousand lines when it really only needs to be three hundred. We're gonna fix that next year too. Equipment in our, um. We just looked at what we spent this year. And, and ran it between. The contract services, we talked about, um. Couple, couple different options on places we might need to spend that to optimize our, our city. Uh, city expenses. I, I'm going brain dead. I know we did go look at that number and some of the expenses in there. I said that's not happening next year, or doesn't need to happen next year.
Why was that?
Which is, uh, we loaded to fifteen.
Purchases for stuff for the staff and.
Yes. Yeah.
And I think it did have like those fees for the court and stuff like that, or in there, various fees and things like that.
Yes. Uh, retirement's just a straight number. Um, miscellaneous equipment purchases. Here again, the mology first. Any, any questions, huh? Okay. Um, on city hall, it's pretty straightforward too. Um, here again, the building M and R. Left it high. The, the plan is some of that money will be spent this year. You know, it's needed for older remediation, we're trying to get people out here and we're close to the end of budget cycle, so. Um, that's where we're at. City park. Um, that park M and R. Uh, Taz, I'll, I'll bump that up another five thousand. To, um, to, to, for fence.
Okay.
Thank you.
We need that. I don't seem to see any of that.
Yeah, I don't either.
We've never taken care of the park, we've never maintained it.
Yeah. We have hot tax money.
We have the money to pay for it.
Yeah. It'll be able to hot tax. Um, okay, y'all wanna see it now? I'll change it.
Oh, and it's gonna go to hot tax. Then it's not gonna be in the city park expenses, it'll be down in hot tax. If we're gonna pay for the fence, out of the hot.
No, city park is charged. Yeah, it's still.
City park is, it does use hot.
Yeah, on tax. Um, so here again, we've got our court salaries, uh, it's all pretty straightforward.
So, that's.
What?
The street projects, that's, that's an offset for the dedicated funds from the hundred percent.
Yes. It is. Um, EMS building coverage. Okay, so, um, when we, when we look at expense and projects. Um, we don't have anymore, um, these we will move off as we move further into next year. I, I kept them here as line items just to show the, the consistency, but, uh, when we start actually reporting on a. Two, five, seven, nine basis, uh, those won't be in there. Um, I did leave bulkhead project funds in here. Um. One of the things we've been throwing around is to take the area next to the sewer plant. And, uh, turn it into a nature walk. And then hot tax money will pay for a bulkhead repair.
That's stretching.
Yes.
That's a, that's a stretch.
That's stretching.
If you can do it, you can do it, right?
It's an amenity.
It's a stretch.
It's not that much of a stretch at all.
Yeah, it is a stretch. From where I'm sitting, it's a stretch. I, I think.
We can't make it work.
And we would, we would have to be very, very careful about how we word.
We would. We can, we can word it. So, it's gonna be an amenity to provide it to all, we'll advertise it.
But it's a nature walk, it's gotta be safe, and it's gotta be safe, but it's.
Okay, guys, I'm just saying.
Okay, I left it in there. Because. Because, um, it needs to be repaired.
Yeah, no doubt about that.
And it's getting worse. And, um, it's here because it needs to be repaired. It will be, it, it will be progressed next year. It's just, are we gonna find a way to progress it under hot tax? Right now, it's targeted to general fund. So, in our, in our analysis and calculations, it shows it going, going out of our just general fund. Um. Um, beach erosion project. There's, there's still, there's some money in there just in case we have to. Help pay for any portions of GLO, moving that project forward. Um, I left five thousand in beautification and landscaping. Um, I, I, here again, some of this can potentially be out of hot tax as well. Um, you know, I've had recommendations on painting our transformer boxes and, you know, doing some different kind of creative things. To help im- improve the city visually. Um, here again, the beach user fee, it was in and out. Uh, general fund reserves, this hundred and three thousand from last year, that's carried on now for, I think, seven years. It's for, um, an elevator. The elevator repairman keeps telling us that our elevator is going to crater at any day. It's so antiquated that you can't really get the right parts anymore. And at some point, we're gonna have to bite the bullet and buy a new elevator. So it has stayed in here year to year. Uh, I actually didn't carry it forward that way this year. Um, if that happens, we'll deem it an emergency exercise. We'll pull the money out of reserves and do an amended budget again. That's my thought on moving forward with that, rather than having that line item just blow, 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 right?
Maybe we have to walk up the stairs.
And confusing the budget.
But you have to, you have to have accessible.
We have to have that.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, the issue, yeah.
We do.
Of course.
And that's why it'll be an emergency repair. Uh, it's not something we can postpone, but that's my proposal in dealing with that, is that if that occurs. We would be in an amended budget option again. But we could also still end up having, being able to find extra revenue to, to manage in any way. So, I'm, I'm of the mind that we deal with that when it happens. Um, so this court security, ten thousand, that would be a start at doing what we need to do. In, uh, in blocking off, um, you know, we really should have bulletproof glass around our area there. And the door that goes in should be key coded. And, uh, there's some, I know it sounds scary and we don't like to think that, but it's the world we live in today.
Just come to, just come to court, you know, you might agree with the judge.
Um, so hotel motel fund, here again, just the, the. The things we move over to that. We added, you can see we added dumpster services here. Um, that's the cost that used to go to our, to our residents. Um, and because it's for beach trash pickup, um, it's an amenity that helps bring people here. Um, swimming pool, salaries are, are going up. Uh, we had some lifeguard issues this year. We, we had an incident, uh, we fired those three lifeguards after the incident. Um, and what our. What our pool manager tells me is that we pay thirteen and fourteen dollars an hour. Lasker, is it Lasker Park in Galveston? Lasker Park in Galveston? Pays eighteen dollars an hour. So, you get what you pay for.
And they have a shortage of, uh, lifeguards as well.
So, um, the, the salaries include, uh, going up to sixteen fifteen. And seventeen fifteen for the supervising lifeguards. Um, the, 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 the pool, uh, has some additional money in there for, well, pool furniture. Um, and s- some of that money will spend this year. We actually had a five-hundred-dollar donation from an individual. And then our, uh, hot hamburger fundraiser raised about eight-fifty. So we're gonna go on and purchase some furniture with that this year. And, um, cause it's, it's sitting there. But the extra five thousand is because we're down to almost no furniture. It's all crumbled. Under the building of the pool M and R. Um, that includes a projection that we will have to replace one pool pump next year. They're kinda reaching their, their past, their predicted life. And, uh, so, we, we've added a little extra money in there. The deck needs to be continually painted and updated. If we don't keep it painted, it crumbles. So, um, there's money in there to paint that deck, uh, next year as well. Here again, all this comes out of hot tax.
And was the, um, the, there, there was some utilities that was, it looked like, which they analyzed. Was that ever taken care of?
Which one?
At the pool.
Oh, I don't know about that.
That, that one that was.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one that was fixed.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That was fixed a long time ago.
Okay.
Here again, as soon as you noted it, Taz, it got fixed.
Oh, thank you.
Um, marine, um, is, is mostly gasoline. Police department, uh. We have added monies in. Um. Well, workers' comp has been, been higher than was predicted, same with group health going up. Um, there's, there's money in here, our radios are ancient. And, um. Because the, the number of reserves we have and the turnovers, um, oh, the uniforms. So, I have been, uh, concerned. That as a city, we don't provide the bulletproof vests for our officers. We make them by their own. And, uh, I, I don't feel that we're responsible employers. Um, and that we should provide adequately fitted and, and adequately rated. Uh, bulletproof vests for our officers.
And they have a, a self-life, don't they?
Yes. So, um, on the uniforms, it's quite a bit higher, um, because those bulletproof vests are about eight, nine-hundred dollars each. And we have seven full-time officers. So, are y'all okay with that?
I would say yes.
Okay, just making sure. Um, because previously, it was, it was never, it was always shot down. It's been suggested for many years.
Last year still.
Okay, I'm bringing it forward because, obviously, being a law enforcement spouse. I, I have a bit of an extra passion for making sure that our brothers in blue are as protected as they can be.
And a day to world is necessary.
Yes, it is. Um, the equipment vehicle leaves as standard. Um, we, we've added a line for public affairs. Um, because Chief does a great job bringing, bringing a lot of positivity to the city. Uh, I'll bring it up at the council meeting on the twenty-fourth, but, but Chief has reached out. And in February, towards the end of February, Jamaica Beach is gonna sponsor the Special Olympics Polar Plunge. So we'll host them at city hall, either here in our main building. Or we'll work with Kyle, the police chief, to kinda clear out, um.
Fire chief.
Fire chief, sorry. One of the areas below, sorry, one of the areas below. Um, I hear they start the morning with kolaches and things like that, and then we all go to the beach and jump in! And raise a lot of money for Special Olympics.
Do it, does it, pledges or?
Yes, you can do pledges. Yes, you get pledges, uh, for, for people to support you jumping in. So, uh, it's a great event. It'll be, it'll be great publicity for Jamaica Beach. Retirement, animal control, legal fees, all that's pretty standard. Uh, roads, beaches, and canals. Um. We found out street lighting is not really street lighting, it's street electricity.
Hey, now, that's rich.
Um, keep on going down, that's all pretty straightforward. Uh. Here again, we showed our encumbered hot tax and then our unencumbered funds. Leftover from our excess revenue. Then we move into the municipal funds, this is where we start getting challenging. So, uh, donations. Uh, the revenue lines are all pretty straightforward. We talked about, we are raising garbage rates. And to, to cover our costs. Uh, sewer rates, we're not anticipating going up. Um. Um, water service fees, we will be raising the rates a little bit, but you can tell not much. Based on what we collected this year and what's going on and what we're projecting next year. Uh. So we're looking at transferring that unencumbered money from the general fund. Into our municipal fund to give us a total revenue of one point seven one four. Then as we look at, as expenses, um, I'm, I'm, I'm hope I'm not too far off here on repairs for water. At, at fifty thousand dollars, we spent sixty-four so far this year. But our water leaks, our water leaks are declining. As we get more and more sections done. Our, our break rate is, is going down. Um, electricity. Um, the wastewater treatment expenses, I, I did lower that because we've not, we've not spent that full amount. Um, I've increased lift stations M and R.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just because they, they need help. Uh, sewer contractor fees, I've actually cap- captured what, what we're traditionally spending. Um, okay, so water purchases. Uh, I increased it a little bit. Um, Galveston hasn't proposed their raising their rates, but they could at any time. Permits, dues, and fees. Uh, so on repairs for water. Um, oh, and I should go back, this, the, the repairs for sewer. That was.
Dental period.
That, I'm sorry. Yes, repairs for sewer, I have lowered it. We were very high this year because of the two blowers we repaired. Um, but we still have, if you go walk around the sewer plant, most of our valves are a complete rusty mess. Handles are gone off of them. Um, there's, there's several small motors that need to be upgraded and improved. handles are gone off of them, um, there's, there's several small motors that need to be upgraded and improved. So that's why sewer repairs is still listed at fifty thousand, we made good headway this year, um, uh, but there's more to do. So on the water. Um, when you look at repairs, we've spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year on water repairs. And, and I have projected it to be one fifty next year. Here again, I might be being too aggressive, but the invoices that I've seen come across, we really have dropped. Uh, we were doing forty and fifty thousand dollars a month in December, January, February, and and, and now we probably really are only doing about ten, ten to twelve thousand dollars a month in repairs. Uh, so. So that's, on the water meter expenses, we, um, we've been, been clicking away at the ones that are bad, but we also need to replace all of our lids, they all flow away, so.
Or come away, right?
Yes, uh, they're not leak bearing, so we've, we've proposed coming in with a sturdier, better slip-on kind of water meter box cover, uh, and, and doing that for the whole city, um.
One question. What, what is, two, two thousand and five, main water line expenses?
Yeah, so we break it up into repairs on our smaller lines, and then on our main water lines.
So we're really looking at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Versus, versus three twenty this past year.
Yeah, we just have to get that down.
Yes, we do.
I don't, I don't know how to do it, it's got them down.
Yeah, well, we gotta replace water lines. Uh, so the administration expenses are just the portions that we move over. Uh, fire hydrant expenses, I took to zero, we have one more fire hydrant sitting downstairs that needs to be installed. We will expedite getting that installed under this budget cycle. And, um, which means I need to raise that. I need to add two thousand dollars. So on two hundred and forty-eight, I need to add two thousand dollars to my projected fire hydrant expenses for this year. To get that
Mm-hmm.
fire hydrants installed.
Yes, sure.
Sorry, guys, I missed that. Um. There's our garbage contract surplus, that's what we're projected to pay to air and air waste, along with that dumpster fee, um, from up above. We have to pay sales tax on that amount. And then, uh, Esther, remind me, on that sales tax, I need to up that, I'll write it down. We didn't include sales tax on the portion from the dumpster fee, and it needs tax on it also. Um. Allocated funds for projects, so my proposal is that we revamp a lift station every year. Um, the, the pumps we have are on mishmash, many of the lift stations only have one pump when they need two. Um, their piping's corroded and old, so my, the, the vaults are fine, uh, the basic piping design is fine. Uh, maybe some repairs in different places, so I've estimated just about sixty thousand dollars to go in and, and upgrade the pumps and, and upgrade some of the critical piping within it, and so that would be a proposal for every year.
Mayor, how many lift stations do we have?
Seven.
Seven.
We've revamped two of them, so there's five more to go. Yeah. Um, okay, so here's the biggie, on the waterline projects, we've, we've, uh, approved the pre-engineering for phase five. Um, the estimate for that is gonna be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do, it's slightly more, uh, more piping to do. So, uh, we'll be coming to council, uh, probably end of September, to, uh, to review that. The, we'll be going out for bids as soon as we approve the budget. So October one, we'll be ready to go out to bid for the next phase of the water project, and talking with engineering, the target for that is to be ready for that installation on January, you know, early January. Um, but then, I'm proposing another six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, looking at, looking at the phased approach, looking out, and, and I spent a lot of time with this, I've had a couple volunteers help me look at the layout of our water lines and where the criticalities are. So we're looking at lumping it to, to reduce engineering costs, we're gonna do bigger projects when we do it, that's the proposal. So, um, this would be like two projects in one with the six fifty. Um, and then we'll be bringing another million, there'll probably be two more years of a million dollars each year. And there are funds in our banking account to do that with, and I still, it still leaves us enough for emergency management. So, uh. That's what I'd like to put in next year's budget, of course, all of this has to be approved by council. And before I would come to council for approval, we will have a little long-range plan worked out and presented on, on how we're gonna accomplish that, and how it impacts our funding. And then that will be also reflected in our reduced interest income, because we're pulling that money out to, to use to build, to build water pipe. Um. The lift station number seven, as we talked about, it's, it's gonna be finished, um, the sewer plant repair project. You know, as you know, one side of our plant is down, and, uh, I will tell you that this two fifty is pretty much a wag.
It's all right, wags.
So, uh.
You gotta have something in there for your budget.
Yeah, we do, and, uh.
Wag is better than nothing.
Yes, so, uh, the, the plan would be to, to, uh, in the first section of next year's budget, you know, by, by December, to be ready to come forward with a proposal on the rebuild for the sewer plant and getting the other half going. So that leaves us short a million dollars. Nine hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Your pocket.
Yeah. I, you know what I should've done? I should've brought a bunch of anomaly money. Or Mark Posey probably knows this, in Indonesia, uh, I could've brought you a million rupiah, and it would've been worth about a dollar.
Basils.
Huh?
Basils.
Basils. Um, so looking at this, obviously, I can't show a negative nine sixty-three in my budget, we have to, to do a balanced budget. So, uh, as approving this budget, it would be approving, uh, capturing hell over funds in the municipal account.
Okay, that, that's great, I think. I don't know about others, but I still would like to see what, how much of our funds are encountered.
Yeah, I will, I will have that, I will.
We need to figure out. Either that or just like decide a couple million for a
Emergency.
Emergency.
Yes. It needs to be reserved, so we need a, we need a summary of our reserve funds, our, in our encumbered funds.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah, I'm gonna have that, I, I have been, been working on it, digging back through these old confusing budgets. Has, uh, has been the needle in the haystack, so, but I will have that for you for Monday. Well, cause I'm not, I mean, I'm not okay asking for this budget approval without it. But it'll be in, it'll be in Monday's agenda package.
Well, I want to hear citizen comment, tonight we didn't have a chance to hear citizens comments.
Well, technically on a workshop, um, we don't, but.
We have a public hearing with what we approve this budget.
Right, yeah, right.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the public, but.
Isn't that when we're allowed citizen comments?
Yes, well.
I mean, I don't mind having folks comment.
Yeah, if y'all have, I mean, there's only three of you, if y'all have, that is stuck out, stuck out in my lecture.
For once, no comment.
Yeah, good work.
Yeah, it's great good work.
Uh, no, so, so the plan is, the, the budget will be proposed next Thursday. So, uh, and there will be public comments at that meeting. And then the fourteenth of September will be our official public hearing. And that'll be the first part of the meeting for the public hearing. And, and then the, for, my recommendation is then as part of that fourteenth, we have our official public hearing. We also propose our tax rate, approve our tax rate, and approve our budget. If there is a citizen comment that raises all kinds of concerns about either of those, then we would have to hold another special meeting, uh, the next week to adopt those changes, and then do another public hearing, we have to give notice five days in advance of another public hearing. And, uh, and then we could, we would still have time in a special meeting the next week on the twenty-first to propose and approve the tax rate and approve the budget. So that's the schedule.
Why pushing it up like you're doing it, leaving time?
Well. We were a little behind the ball this year, normally this presentation should've been done, uh.
About a month ago.
About a month ago. And, um.
It's done.
It's done, and, uh, and, and we had, I just couldn't bring it forward till we had a chance to dig through it all, and Esther's been working, I, I mean, I'm not trying to. The previous interim city secretary did nothing for two months. So Esther was, and then what was done, um, was not done with any system or accuracy. So, uh, Esther had two months to fix while trying to, while trying to keep up with the day-to-day. So she deserves just more than. Um, she, she has done an amazing job. The other thing that is embedded within this budget, and it's not shown as a detailed line item, is we are moving from QuickBooks desktop to QuickBooks on, uh, online.
Yay.
It gives us, uh.
It gives me a little, uh, peace of mind.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Uh, so we are, we are gonna be doing that. Okay. Let me get to my agenda. So. We did one and two, um. Y'all okay with the schedule?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great.
So that's for discussion, and oh, we didn't put adjourn. On the agenda.
Well, then I guess we're just gonna have to stay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All set, good, all in favor?
I'm off, stay.
Thank you, guys, and thank you, guys, for hanging in here.
Good job.